Okay. The meeting today will be, as always, will be operated in compliance with the Nebraska Open Meeting laws, a copy of which is on the back wall. We're going to do one agenda change when we get to the county board agenda. I will announce that first. And if we could, we'll convene as the Douglas County Board of Equalization. If I could have the roll called, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
And Commissioner Rogers will not be here today. We have two items on the agenda we'll take together, A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, July 31st, 2012, and call for a meeting set Tuesday, August 14th, 2012, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
Motion for V and D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the, uh, please vote.
Motion passes.
Now, we have a period of citizen comments. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board as the Board of Equalization, as it relates to anything not on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the Board of Equalization on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will go to resolutions. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 of them, numbers D through K. They are hearings on certified assessment corrections reflecting omitted or undervalued property and approval of corrections to the tax rules, number CAC 12069. Set the final 2012 real property evaluations for all residential and commercial real estate property protests that were reviewed by Douglas County Board of Equalization and its referees. Is there anybody who's going to want anything pulled out of these?
I think we'd be smart just to take those two, because I think from every item from here on, we'll have somebody wanting to.
Oh, that's right, yes.
So I would move for the approval of those two items, D and E.
The only, I wanted to take out I.
Okay, we'll take GH. We're only taking E and, uh, D and E right now.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I just want to be sure, does E, is E the acceptance of the Board of Equalization's, the referee's recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, well, I definitely want to speak to that, so I'd appreciate if that were held separately.
Okay. So we will just, the motion is now just D, is the second, same.
Set, yes, fine.
Call for the vote on D. And we'll now, oops, I'll wait.
Commissioner Boyle.
I'm trying to abstain.
Just hold on.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we will take E and Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you very much. I've passed out some, an email that I sent to Rick, because it, Rick Kubat, our Board of Equalization Administrator, and it lists the questions that I have, and I've asked that referees come here and discuss these in the public. The first question that I have is this, do you want me to proceed, Rick? Is this helpful? Okay. The first one I have is on a building, it is located at 222 South 15th Street. This building was in, it's the Murdoch Building, and it has had trouble in the past, as some buildings will, in the vacancy rates. And back in several years ago, when the commissioners were hearing these complaints about high valuations, I remember sitting with other commissioners, and we reduced the valuation substantially, because they had a very high, very, very high vacancy rate. Well, the, in 2007, the assessed valuation was $31 million, and recently, the building was assessed at $27 million, and our referees have reduced the valuation to $20 million. And so I'd like to know what's going on with the building, and how does it, how does it rate a $7.2 million reduction? The valuation since 2007 has dropped by over $11 million. So if someone, do we have a referee here that's going to be speaking about that?
Yes.
Okay.
If I can, Commissioner Kraft will take Commissioner Boyle's questions, and then before we take a vote on the item, if I could quickly address the board. With us today is Chris Musto. He was a coordinator for your commercial properties, and he's happy to answer any questions you have on that property.
Very good. That's acceptable.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to ask you first, just so that for my benefit and the benefit of anyone else who isn't familiar with the valuations of commercial buildings. Commercial property has, owners have options on how their buildings are valued. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, would you go, kind of, discuss those options? Because it's unlike real, the property owned by individuals. We're stuck with one method, and the commercial property gets two or three. Would you tell us about those options?
When you're talking about the valuation is through a commercial, it's either by the cost, the sales, or the income approach?
Right.
Okay.
And can you briefly describe what those are, without getting into a whole lot of detail? Just the cost of replacement, or the cost of what?
Yeah, try to keep it in simple terms as possible.
Please.
Not go very long here.
For me.
Cost approach, in a nutshell, would be to go ahead and take the cost of the building today, and then depreciating it back to what, you know, it's probably not a new building, is what I'm saying.
Right.
And then you're going to add back the land value, and you would come up with the value that way.
Okay.
Then the sales comparison approach, you would take the sales of properties that would have at least some, you're hoping, as much similarity as you could to your subject property, and you're adjusting those sales to your subject to give you kind of an indication of how they compare to one another. And the third valuation would be the income capitalization approach, which in simple terms is you're saying you've got a rental that you can generate from the property, you're going to subtract the expenses to operate that, and then you're going to, what they talk about is a capitalization rate or a return, and it will, it'll give you a value that way as well. And then you could have three, hopefully similarly close values.
Thank you. That really was a wonderful definition. Can you talk a little bit about the valuation, and which one was used on this building?
Well, on the Security National Properties Funding Building, is this the 222 South 15th Street?
Yes.
Yes. The basis of the protest they provided, they did recognize that the value was $27.2 million. They went through their analysis that they talked about, that it was purchased in 2004 for $11,700, which we're not disputing. And the value had been raised. Now, what they also indicated is this property, along with 34 others, part of this group is in bankruptcy. And they did provide an appraisal that was done by a third-party national appraisal firm, and they did what they talked about, a leased fee value, and they were asking for a number of around $17 million. They did demonstrate in that, that as of 2011, the occupancy was 60, in the 60 percent range, and they also provided net income, net operating income of about $1,470,000. It's about a 200-page report. We did look at it, what we were looking at there, and bringing the value down, saying we understand that it's in a situation that is probably not stabilized, and this should be a temporary reduction, to bring it and look at it each year, to see if they don't continue to lease some of that space and bring it to a more stabilized level, and probably back up, or possibly even higher than its current assessment.
Okay, well, I'm satisfied with your description. If anyone else has any questions.
Commissioner Morgan.
Chris, thank you. I spent about an hour with Chris this morning, went through some of these. I knew you were going to bring these up. I think they did a superb job on this, looking at the income numbers, and that's the best approach in looking at this building. So I think it was really fair what he came up with.
Rick, did you want to speak to this, or? Okay, way to, we're through. All right. I appreciate that, and I think that really explains what took place, and I wasn't aware of their situation. So I think that really answers my questions about that building.
Okay.
The next building I want to talk about is Target at 72nd and Dodge. And from 2007 through 2011, the building was assessed at just over $10 million, and the assessment was reduced by the assessor, I believe, to $8.7 million. And then our referees reduced the valuation further to $5,160,000. And I'm curious, we've had a four, well, almost a $5 million reduction since 2011, this last year, so it's almost cut in half. Can you tell us what's going on with Target?
Well, looking at the Target property, the approach that the protester took there was, rather than the valuation, they took an equalization basis. And they prepared a report that gave several other retail buildings that they felt were in a comparable location or type that they could be used, and that's what they utilized. Again, it looked like something that might be more temporary, even though they're leased, because they're talking about the crossroads is not in a situation where it's very stabilized the rest of them all. They did provide the Dillard's, which is next door, which was assessed even, because, and it's vacant, so I understand it's probably under a temporary, very much lower. The Sears on the other side of the shopping center, and I believe they provided then a few from the West Roads, like the Von Mar and J.C. Panties, which might be in more similar situation. There was also some question about the square footage, and, you know, that's, when we look at that, we've only got to work with what we're being presented. So it was treated in a sense that it was still kept equalized with the other properties that are out there, with possibly a review for next year, as could very likely change that value. Unlike a property that had leased, I think this is owner-occupied, so we would have liked or requested a rent roll and operating history and that sort of thing, but it wasn't available, because they don't have a lease on the property.
Do you, do you think that the assessor's valuation of 8.7 was inadequate? I guess I want you to say that, but it surprised me to look at the radical reduction so rapidly. You know, it did go down to 8.7 million from 10.1, and then it was further reduced to 5.1. I just, it seems pretty substantial to me. It is substantial, but you think it's, obviously you think it's a valid assessment today.
Well, I think the assessor's office does a very good job in developing models for the properties that they have to value. That isn't to say, though, that something can't either kind of fall out of the model or temporarily not fit for various economic and other reasons, but I don't have the option to review their model and all the other properties that way. That's within their own office. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't speak to that, other than it's a reasonable methodology that they use. They use a correct methodology to put values on buildings.
Thank you. I think others have questions or comments, possibly. Commissioner Morgan?
This one, I, as we discussed, I think what's difficult is you don't have a lease. I mean, it's owner-occupied, that makes it more difficult. My feeling is, this is pretty low. $56 a square foot on the building. Did they give you any sales numbers to show, hey, our sales in the last year have really tumbled down 30% or something like that, to justify that sort of thing?
I would have to review the file again, but I don't believe I saw any actual sales dollars from the store, no.
The only thing I'd say is, Commissioner Boyle, is if that information were provided, and they demonstrated that, hey, they have fallen off in the last two years or something like that, then I think it could be justified. Otherwise, I think the $56 is very, very low on this one.
Well, I think what I'd like to do, I'd like to have this property set aside to be considered separately, and we can maybe talk a little bit more about it, either approve it as recommended, or go back to the assessor's valuation, or discuss it a little bit more. So I'd like to have this pulled off and considered separately. Mr. Chairman.
Do we need that as a motion? We need a motion?
I'll make a motion to do that.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Now, before we vote on that, if we hold things over, we're going to have to have an emergency meeting, I understand?
No, we won't hold it over. We'll vote on it today.
Okay, gotcha. Very good.
Okay. Do we have to vote?
Please, we have a motion and a second, please vote. And this vote is on pulling out the Target properties at 72nd and Dodge Street.
Target. So we're voting on pulling it out?
Yes, and we will vote on that separately later.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Chris, the final group of properties that I want to talk about are, I'm not sure the exact name, I think it's North Park.
Yes.
117th and 18th and Blondo area. There were three properties, and maybe, maybe these don't really need to be discussed, but I'll, they're kind of, I'll just bring them up anyway. The 2525 North 117th Avenue was reduced from 11.8 million to 8.3 million. 2533 North 117th Avenue was reduced from 9.3 to 6.5 million. And 11819 Miami Street was reduced from 7.4 million to 5.1 million. Can you talk about those properties in a group?
Yes, I can.
Okay, please do.
Okay. Those three properties all had a common element tenant, which had given notice late last year that they will be vacating the properties. One, I believe one property, they're vacating by 100%, the entire building. Another one by roughly 90%, and the other one, 60, 70%. And we looked at that situation as understanding that they are vacating, though this year, those are still the sort of factors that you would take into consideration if you're putting a value on a property as a specific date. This is a clear case where you're wanting to understand that they're either going to have no income or very little income, and they're going to need to spend some time, effort, and money to release that space, bring them back up to stabilized levels, and absolutely, these should be reviewed each and every subsequent year until they are brought back into the fold of the stabilized market.
Great. Well, I don't have any question about, I think that's the right decision. I was not aware of what was going on. I do want to say something about your skills. They are really outstanding. We're very fortunate to have you doing this work. It's pretty obvious, when you can speak off the cuff.
Thank you.
Rattle these things off, and give us definitions and so forth. I really appreciate the work that you do, and please don't take my questions as, or putting these on the agenda as anything less than full support for what you're doing. You're doing a great job.
No, I appreciate that.
I do want to say, too, I did want these discussed in public. I know that we had an opportunity to do them in private this morning, but I feel like the taxpayers need to see the competence level that we have, and what's going on with these valuations, to kind of shed a little bit of light on a very complex issue. So I appreciate your work, Chris, and thank you for your answers. They're very adequate, very good.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Boyle, I appreciate you bringing these up, and, Chris, what Commissioner Boyle said, I told you privately, too, I thought you did an outstanding job. And we did some comparison of these properties against some other office buildings this morning together. And, I mean, what he's done on this one, what the assessor did, is most fair. I think we looked at some other properties that probably need to have their values raised, that have the occupancy and that sort of thing. But this is probably going to be a challenged property now, and possibly in the future, what's going to happen with it. But I thank you for your work, and I think it's good, and I think you bringing this up for the public to hear what we do and how we look at some of these things is really very, very helpful.
Thank you. Thanks a lot, Chris.
And don't go, Rick Kubat wanted to say things, I don't know if.
Before we vote on the four or five Board of Equalization recommendation items, I just wanted to say a couple of things, that this process requires four different departments or groups working closely together. This was a very good year in terms of that. I wanted to thank the assessor's office. They enabled the Board of Equalization to run in an efficient manner by timely submitting their assessor package. They stayed ahead of the game this year, and allowed us to be very efficient. Dotcom continued to make IT changes on the fly. I wanted to thank the NAU's Dennis Pajinski and their team. The Clerk's Office ran the clerical side. They completed additional work this year to assure that everything that was filed was reviewed. We put in some additional procedures, because last year, we had a few files clipped to the back of some other protests that we didn't get reviewed. Lastly, and Commissioner Boyle spoke to this, but with you today is Chris Musto, the commercial coordinator. Also, in the back row is Rick Coder. Rick did the coordinating of the residential properties, along with John Stevens. These guys work seven days a week to try and get these recommendations to this board as soon as possible, because we're under some significant time restrictions. Before we turn it, before you vote, again, I'd recommend that, you know, you take public comment, and just for purposes of clarification, for the amendment to take the Target at 72nd and Dodge out, I wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, that the parcel number associated with that property is 0913447542. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Boyle. I'd like to thank you also for bringing these forward. The explanation was excellent. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this? On any of these items? Or on the Board of Equalization in general? Is there anyone who wishes to address any property in the audience? Seeing none, we have a motion to accept the recommendations, as presented, with the exception of the one parcel, whose number I don't remember, but that's Target at 72nd Street? Oh, excuse me.
No motion.
Oh, there is no motion. Okay, we need a, I thought we had a.
We're just to pull it.
Okay, okay.
Except for Target.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Just one, please.
Yeah, except for Target. I'm not going to get any special about it this weekend, I can tell.
And I'd like to take.
Motion passes.
I'd like to take just a moment of personal privilege. Former Mayor Mike Fahey is with us. We now have three mayors in the room. Three former mayors. Okay. Yes, Commissioner Borgeson.
I just have a question about process, because if we just approved item E, and there's still the Target property that Commissioner Boyle brought up, and then these other four resolutions, do not those have to be voted on and then go back and approve item E again?
I don't believe so, because each one is separate. Now, we will now vote for, yes.
Yeah, weren't they all separated out, the ones that, and then you're going to vote individually on the ones that were separated out?
Yes. Okay. Commissioner Boyle would now like to bring up, I'm sure, the Target property.
Yes, I, I think that the reduction is a little bit more than I can accept. I would like to go back to, at least, under the circumstances, we don't have all the data in front of us, we don't know some of the questions that Commissioner Morgan asked about, about sales and so forth, if they're dropping, and we don't seem to have that. I would feel more comfortable if we went back to what the assessor recommended, which was $8,718,600. And then, that's still a reduction of about $1,500,000 from just last year's assessment. I just don't think that, you know, I don't think that this property warrants a 49% reduction since last year, I just don't see it. So I'd like to cut to the chase and make a motion that we accept the assessor's recommendation of $8,718,600.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I see no further lights on. Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. I'm just not very comfortable knowing that these, the property owner did successfully argue on an equalization basis, comparing to other properties around, that they weren't being fairly treated. We don't have the opportunity to hear that. They don't have the opportunity to tell us that. They had no way of knowing that this one property was going to be singled out, and don't have anybody present to say what convinced our commercial appraisers or referees that this change was warranted. So I'm not comfortable, real comfortable, making a decision of this magnitude without even giving the owner the opportunity to state their case. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
I respect what you're saying. I guess when I think of comparing this to the Dillard's building, you know, here's a building that's totally in operation, you know, making sales where Dillard's is setting their vacant. Secondly, Dillard's is a, I think, a four-story building, much different. This is a new, much newer building. Secondly, it's assessed at per square foot, it weigh less than half of what the Treasurers Building is on 84th, that we pay taxes on, meaning the county. And I did go through it with them this morning, like I said, for about an hour, and this one's, I think, a difficult one. I think the others are warranted, but I respect what the assessor's group did in their valuation, and I think, unfortunately, they should have brought their sales numbers, just as the people did in North Park, showing their income numbers and where they are, and as the other one did. So I'm going to support this, and I hope other commissioners do, to keep it the way the assessor suggested.
Commissioner Boyle?
I really respect what you said, too, Commissioner Duda, and I brought that up, and was told that it wasn't necessary that they be here, and I don't know whether they were notified or not, were they?
They were not, and as I informed Commissioner Boyle, that this board could make adjustments on the recommendations without the parties being present, and as such, I would not notice property owners in.
Okay, and the other thing, too, I appreciate that, Rick. The other thing is that, if you really, as a person who shops at Target, I'm going to have to get a different license plate when I pull in now, but anyway, as a person who shops at Target at that location, I mean, I think it is really, in a lot of ways, a standalone property. I mean, it's a destination, people go there to get what Target has to sell. They do a great job advertising, and prices are great. And I think at the other end of the spectrum, you've got Dillard's next door that's vacant. I just don't see that as having any effect on Target. I think it's just viewed as there by itself, you know? And then I think Sears has its own difficulty, and I don't, I don't think I'd compare it to Sears, and I'm not sure I'd jump to the West Roads to compare it either. So I really think it's a standalone operation, and I think it's a very successful store. Look at the parking lot, and the trade, and the business. I just think that 8.7 million is a much more, is a really fair valuation. That's what the assessor concluded. He reduced it from 10 million to 8.7. I'd like to go with that, so I think it's reasonable.
Okay, I see no further lights on. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address this issue? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Thank you. And I want to thank Rick for the help with all this. It was really throwing a cog in things, and I know that we're really happy to see this day come to an end, and I'm sorry I prolonged it.
And Rick, thanks for sitting in this morning for the hour. I appreciate that, too.
Next, we will take issues separately that may have a, that will have a conflict of interest, and we will have a commissioner abstaining on each one of these. Item F is set the final 2012 real property evaluation for the real property protests that were filed and reviewed on Douglas County Board of Equalization as referees. One is the property Anthony Mangerio, 3910 North 158th Street. The other is. The other is Michael Boyle Jr., 304 North 54th Street. We have a motion and a second. Is there anyone who needs to, wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, call for the vote. This next one I will abstain on. Set the value, final 2012 real property evaluation for, et cetera, for Mark Kraft, 3170 Leavenworth. Second. I'll call for the vote, I'm sorry. I just assumed. Next, we have one for Chris Rogers, 2616 North 32nd Avenue.
I'd move for approval.
Why did I abstain?
Call for the vote.
Just a moment, please. Okay.
And next we have.
Motion passes.
And next we have PJ Morgan on items, eight items here, I'm not going to list them all. Do we have a motion? Second. Call for the vote. Next, we will take J and K together. J is approving corrections for errors in assessment of personal property and K is approving application for tax exemption on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer. Second. We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Just a moment, please. Okay.
Now, we will convene as the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority. Rule call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Mr. Chairman.
Here. We have approval of the minutes of the Noxious Weed Control Authority meeting held on Tuesday, January 31st, 2012. Most do approve. Second. We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. Next, we have citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board as the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will do item three, resolution placing special assessments on property in Douglas County. Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the assessments? Seeing none, we need a motion. Second. Call for the vote. Second. And call for the vote.
Just a moment, please.
Now, we will convene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. And after we take the first item, the minutes and the claims, we will move up item, the HMA contract, which is under Health and Human Services, item 7F, yes. Okay. Call for the rule.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Here. First, we have two items. A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, July 31st, 2012. And B is approval of claims submitted for payments processed through Tuesday, August 7th, 2012. A complete listing is on file in the office of the clerk, County Clerk Comptroller and is available on the Douglas County Clerk Comptroller's webpage. Second. We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. Next, let's turn the page incorrectly there. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could I ask you to consider the consent agenda without that item so that there are people waiting for consent agenda?
Okay, why don't we, I will accept that.
Thank you.
Why don't we do the consent agenda?
Yes, it was.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 items, items A through H. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now, we will take the HMA contract. If I could have Beth Furlong come forward. We had a committee to study the different contracts, there were four in total, and Beth was on the committee, if you'd like to make your recommendation.
Sure. Beth Furlong, 1517 North Happy Hollow Boulevard. The committee recommends Health Management Associates for this resolution. I'm going to summarize their strengths with what I call the five Cs. Of the four proposals, one, theirs was the most comprehensive. Number two, the employee team is most competent. Number three, the employees are most credentialed. And so, with number two and with number three, they have important work histories in terms of their knowledge and competence. They are active in professional associations in their respective areas and they've held knowledgeable state and national government positions. I've read one of the reports of Contra Costa County in California that they analyzed and they uniquely show their knowledge of the healthcare system and of uniquely getting new kinds of money. So, they know the ins and outs of disproportionate share, hospital financing, Medicare, Medicaid, et cetera. The fourth one, the fourth C, is that they have experience in evaluating county health services. I've just mentioned a county in California and they more recently have worked with Lincoln Lancaster Health Department in Nebraska. The final C is that their proposal was the only one who included a community assessment. Their proposal will work with a subcontractor, the University of Nebraska, a faculty member. And in doing this assessment, they're going to look outside the two health systems because of the effect on law enforcement, corrections, nonprofit advocacy groups, et cetera. They had three references, two of which I've mentioned, Lincoln Lancaster Health Department, Contra Costa County in California, and they've also done work for University of Nebraska Medical Center. The committee believes that they will deliver a quality analysis for Douglas County.
Well, that's great. Thank you. Scott Anderson was also on the committee. Scott, did you want to say anything?
Good morning. I'm Scott Anderson, 6919 Dodge Street. And I do also want to speak on behalf of the proposed engagement of HMA. Before I do that, I want to, I want to recognize all the commissioners and all the staff for doing a great job in being attuned to this critically important issue of how Douglas County Health Center and in particular Behavioral Health and Long-Term Care serves our community. It's an essential, really, life and death part of the role that Douglas County plays in supporting our, our community. And so, I want to applaud everybody involved for being so attentive to this. I was on the Blue Ribbon Committee, which sort of preceded the suggestion to consider engaging an expert from, in this field. And one of the conclusions that our Blue Ribbon Panel got to pretty quickly was that the expertise necessary to do a thorough job and really a effective job of evaluating the options available, both to, with respect to long-term care and with respect to community and mental health, was not available in our Blue Ribbon Committee, as brilliant as we are. And so, one of the recommendations we made right away was, or one of the conclusions we came to right away is that the, that we needed an outside group of some type for a number of reasons. Because of expertise, certainly, and as Beth said, HMA, I think, has tremendous, not only a tremendous amount of expertise, but expertise in the areas that are most important to us getting this right. And I also agree with her that the, that the community needs assessment is really an essential piece of this. This is such a delicate mechanism. The, my father-in-law is at the Long-Term Care Center and I have dozens of friends who are, who regularly need and use the services of the Behavioral Health Center. And in several cases, without having access to both the outpatient clinic and particularly the ICU beds and the, and the conventional behavioral health beds, it's a, it's a matter of, it's the difference between living and dying. So, it's really important that we get this right. There is also the ability, I think, for a third party to be not only exhaustive in their research, but, and in their, and in reporting their findings, have the opportunity to bring some transparency to this that I think we really, really need. Not just for you all to, to run the county, but frankly, for everybody who lives here. So, having said that, again, thank you for, for having the, I think, the astute observation that this is necessary to look at these issues and for your diligence in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Mary Roos from Health Management Associates and she has somebody with her. If you'd come to the front. And you need to identify yourself.
My name is Mary Roos with Health Management Associates. I'm in the Chicago office.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to us today. And I have to say that we did think that the Blue Ribbon Task Force was brilliant in that they really did set out the issues for us to be able to respond to and put together our proposals. So, we thank you for, for that. I just want to tell you a little bit about Health Management Associates. And my colleague Dave Ferguson is here. He's the finance guru for us and will be on this team as well and has done work in Omaha. So, he may be coming up too. But we do have, I don't know if you have the PowerPoint?
Yes. Thank you.
Just a little bit easier to, which do I hit? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Just a little bit about Health Management Associates. We were founded in 1985. We have, we're an independent and national research and consulting firm and we have 15 offices nationwide with now over 100 consultants and seem to be growing every month. I think the difference with HMA is not only the emphasis that we place on safety nets and working with counties and states and national systems, but it's also the way HMA determines who they want to be part of the HMA team. And for the most part, every one of the principals and the senior consultants and many of the consultants have been in other careers. They come to HMA with years of experience. We have senior officials from the Center for Medicare/Medicaid Services, the Office of Management and Budget. We have a number of Medicaid directors and former mental health commissioners, former long-term care administrators, former nursing home administrators. We have a clinical staff comprised of physicians, nurse practitioners, nurses. We have former hospital and health system CEOs, COOs and CFOs who all bring their experience to the HMA projects. Just a short list, really, of the HMA expertise, but we have been involved in integrated delivery system development. We've worked with all of the government payers, Medicare, Medicaid, CHIP. We also do a lot of our work with the uninsured and vulnerable populations. Behavioral health and long-term care are also part, a large part of the work we do. And now, health reform has become, you know, one of the foremost areas that we're spending a lot of time. Our teams that do the research are working on that and looking at that policy and the law. We have information technology consulting and we work with federally qualified healthcare centers throughout the country as well. So, just to tell you a little bit about our team, and I appreciate what was said already about the competence of our team. And my background is, I'm a registered nurse. I'm a former hospital CEO for a, a small hospital in north central Indiana. And then, we merged with another hospital and I became the COO of the system. So, I was responsible for three hospitals there. Prior to joining HMA seven years ago, I worked for an architect and engineering firm and was their, on their project management team for the healthcare studio. Doug L. and Dave Ferguson, and I should have Dave come up and talk about himself, but they specialize in health finance. Doug was president of the Health and Hospital Corporation in Marion County, Indiana, the largest public hospital and public health department in the state. Dave focuses on expanding access to healthcare for low-income individuals by expanding available funding. And he's an expert in hospital reimbursement and financing particularly related to Medicaid and the uninsured, and that's part of the work that he did with the medical center here. Kate Lyon and Debbie McNamara are behavioral health specialists. Kate is a clinical psychologist with specialty in substance abuse treatment and research with over 25 years' experience in behavioral health. She was the mental health director for the state of Florida prior to joining HMA. And Debbie McNamara has 15 years of public sector health experience, including eight years with the Florida Medicaid Program. And her expertise is in clinical behavioral healthcare and correctional healthcare. And she's a licensed social worker. Kevin Gerasby is our pharmacist. He's our farm D and he's worked in the area of mental health and geriatric medicine as a long-term care consultant pharmacist and as pharmacy administrator with the California Department of Developmental Services. Teresa Sacks has more than 23 years' experience in healthcare, including seven years with CMS. She concentrates on policy analysis of healthcare issues and health reform. Susan Tucker and Nikki Moulton, Pat Baucham and I will be on the long-term care team. Susan has experience in administering long-term care programs at the local and state level and in public accounting. And Susan served in various capacities at the Florida Department of Elder Affairs. Nikki Moulton specializes in the development of Medicaid programs for persons with long-term care and behavioral health needs. She has a Bachelor of Science in Nursing and has worked previously as a licensed nursing home administrator for 150-bed SNIF and she's also a psych nurse. And then, we have the two subcontractors. Pat Baucham is a former director of nursing and long-term care and she has her expertise in long-term care staffing. And Dr. Kim is the researcher we will be working with from the University of Nebraska Medical Center. So, we think that we have a team that's going to cover everything that we proposed to do, that you asked us to do, in the areas of the long-term care and assisted living, in the mental health and community mental health center, pharmacy. And then, the finance and financial management really overlays all parts of it. They will be part of every team and the teams will. They will be part of every team and the teams will collaborate. And then Teresa will work on the impact of health reform. So our plan is to review, review the current organizational structure, operation, and administration of services at the Douglas County Healthcare, including the long-term care assisted living and mental health services. We'll, we'll do the basic community needs assessment. Um, we'll look at lots and lots of documents. We'll be on-site, we'll tour, and we'll do a number of interviews to gather the information that we need. Um, our project approach, um, will be a kickoff meeting with key HMA staff, probably most of the staff that, that I just mentioned. We'll do a site visit, tour of the facilities, and then we'll sit down with the leadership group of each of the areas in mental health services, long-term care, pharmacy, and determine, uh, is our work plan adequate? Do we need to add more interviews? Who else do we need to talk to? Who have we missed? Do we have all the key stakeholders? Do we have the advocates? Do we have the community folks that we need to pull in? And we'll determine the interview list and then we'll conduct interviews and, um, look at any of the research of statutes that we need to do. I'll be responsible for the project management. So, um, after the kickoff meeting, when we meet with Catherine Kelly and her team, we'll determine the project schedule. At this point, we have said it would be four months' duration. Um, we'll look at the due dates that you are all expecting for the deliverables. Um, I will provide communication at least bi-weekly, um, throughout the project. We will then present, um, sorry, our, um, findings and recommendations to you in first a draft report, um, where you will tell us, yes, this is what we expected that you would provide. So there won't be any surprises when we have the final report to you. So that is all I have. Now, if you have any questions for me?
We will, can you help ask questions later?
Thank you.
Need to ask a question right now. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak for or against this? Is there any member of the audience who wishes to speak for or against? Seeing none, we will now proceed with questions. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I, Ms. Roos, I appreciate your presentation. It was really outstanding and, as well as your proposal. I was very enthusiastic after I, I read it. Uh, I did want to ask, um, the, the lineup of professionals that will be involved is very impressive, to say the least. Uh, I'm curious about, uh, your use of interns or people in the back office, so to speak, uh, who do some of the work as well. In these kinds of contracts, I, I'm always concerned that, uh, there are, and I don't, I'm not suggesting this is taking place now, but that there's a group of very credentialed people, but then the people who do really do the work are part-time or interns and so forth. Would you speak to that and what they're, obviously you need those people and I'd like to know what, what, uh, the involvement will be of interns and people who are, uh, not listed in this.
Right. The only people that will be involved on this project are those that are listed, um, in the work plans.
That's fine. That's wonderful. Thank you. This is a terrific proposal and great opportunity for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, else who wishes to speak or ask questions? Seeing none, we need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, second call for the vote.
Motion passes.
And we'd like to thank everybody for all their hard work. We'd like to thank Scott Anderson for his extra time on the Second Committee and the Blue Ribbon Committee, Beth Furlong for her work on both committees, and, uh, Mary Roos and, I forgot her name already, Dave Ferguson, for, uh, coming in and doing the wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
We will now, uh, return to our regular, regular agenda.
Schedule program.
There are no recognitions or proclamations today. Uh, citizen comments, this is an opportunity for members of the audience to be heard at this time for a maximum of three minutes on any topic not on the agenda as it relates to the governance of Douglas County. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will go to presentations. We have County Government Awareness Committee, an update on the Employee Family Fund Day and presentation to Health Center and Treasurer's Office. Commissioner Ferguson and Commissioner Tusha.
Thank you. Your County Government Awareness Committee, um, provided a, um, fun-filled family fund day at Sempeks this year. And, um, we, um, had, had a pretty good turnout for our first year and we hope that, um, we will continue to do planning throughout this year. Couple of the things that we found out were that employees were upset that they had to pay for it. We did get quite a deal, um, at Sempeks though, um, for $15 for an individual, 25 for a couple, and 50 for a family of five. Um, we got a laser tag session, a go-kart session, um, bowling, free rental for ball and, uh, shoes, uh, three games of bowling. So, we got quite a deal, and food. We got pizza, pasta, and hamburger and hot dogs. And so from this, I think we've learned that maybe the committee can look at doing some fundraising that will offset some of the costs for the employees, um, for next year's event, and we'll start and begin to work on that, um, as we move forward. But I want to thank the committee, um, Commissioner Tusha and I want to thank the committee for all the work that they did in making this a successful first-year event. All too often, I know, we're, um, not very accommodating to praising our employees or providing fun things for the employees, and this was one of those that I hope that we will continue, um, the tradition to come. We had a pretty good turnout. Um, we had 117, uh, total. Um, we had, uh, almost 100% from all offices and departments. Uh, the elected officials' offices, um, did an excellent job. There was only one elected official's office that didn't have anybody. Every other elected official had people there. So we'll continue to work on trying to get representation from each office and department. Um, but for the ones that were there, we thought it would be fun to recognize those, um, cheerleaders, if you will, that really got their employees out there. And the first one, um, with the most employees was the Treasurer's Office. And Tim, if you could come down for a minute? Um, Tim Kavanaugh is a member on our committee and did an absolute excellent job on the committee, really organizing and helping us organize the events and getting his employees there. Um, and they tied, um, Tim's very competitive, by the way. He was making phone calls.
He was not happy with the tie.
He was making phone calls to people saying, "Get out here, we're tied." But they came in, uh, as a tie with the Health Center, uh, employees to have the most employees represented at the Family Fund Day. So, we thought it would be fun to present you with the Douglas County Family Fund Day. Congrats to the employees of the Douglas County Department Treasurers for helping to establish a new tradition and having the highest level of participation Saturday, July 28th, 2012, at the First Douglas County Family Fund Day. Let the fun bunch be recognized.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tim. Do you want to say anything?
No.
No discount on license plates or anything?
And the, um, Health Center was the second, uh, or the, the other department that tied with the Treasurer's Office, and, um, they're going to be receiving their certificate during our County Government Awareness Committee meeting, um, next week. Um, and then, um, after that, the, uh, General Assistance and Clerk of the District Courts tied for, um, most employee participation. So, again, I think your committee did an excellent job in trying to, uh, provide at least a, um, reprieve of politics for a few hours of a day and bring the family out and have a lot of fun. So, we'll, uh, have more on that as we plan next year's event. Thank you.
Commissioner Tusha.
Tim, I just want to say that you were acknowledged first. So, you know, you, you do have a first in there, but I want to say thanks for all your hard work.
Next, we have a presentation. Oh, no, that was, um, public hearing on the addition to premise license class I, 98486 for Cherry Hills Event Center LLC, DBA Cherry Hills Event Center, 7050 North 102nd Circle. Is there anyone who wishes to testify on this? For or against?
Hi, Dennis Hall, 11554 Crier Avenue. Uh, I'm here to represent Cherry Hills Event Center and if the board has any questions. Okay.
Commissioner Duda.
A quick question if I may.
Certainly.
Since you're here. This is, they've already got a license?
They have a license.
And all this is about is expanding the, the premises?
There is a patio area so that we can enjoy the hot Nebraska evenings, uh, and we're moving the license to incorporate that.
Okay, very nice. Thank you.
Sir.
Uh, is there a motion? The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second? Call for the vote?
Motion passes.
Okay. And, um, Commissioner Ferguson, could you take over the chairmanship for a moment?
Uh-huh. Thank you. Uh, next, we'll move to, um, committees. The first one being the Finance. Commissioner Morgan and Duda.
As presented, Lieutenant Commissioner, uh, Duda has something. We are going to have a finance meeting on, I want to say, the 14th.
Next week.
After the board meeting.
Week from today.
Week from today. So we're set for that after the board meeting. And are we meeting in 9:03 at the late? Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Uh, Child and Youth Committee, um, Chris, since Commissioner Rogers isn't here, there's one item, the resolution to approve agreement with Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services to provide detention services for juveniles committed or placed with the Department of Health and Human Services at the Douglas County Youth Center.
I'll make a, Mr. Zuz, I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have one. I had, um, I had read the, uh, description of it and I contacted, uh, Brad and we missed making a connection, but I, I'm not, I'm a little concerned about the way that it reads the agreement. It's a little bit strained. I just hope that we're able to, uh, define, you know, the 11th day and when the 10th day begins and when all this tolls. I'm just going to rely on Brad to do that, so, good luck to you. All right. And if, if it turns out to be a shambles, let us know and we'll do something to change the contract. I'll, I'll just rely on you, okay? You've never let us down yet. So, we have a motion to approve, right? Okay?
Motion passes.
Uh, Human Resources, the weekly personnel report from civil services presented, and legislative, um, I believe there's anything, again, uh, any items that you'd like added to our legislative, um, log, uh, please let, uh, Commissioner Craft know. Is there a need for an executive session?
Labor negotiations.
Huh?
Labor negotiations.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Motion passes.
Yes, Commissioner.
Before we do that, I'd like to point out personal privilege. Uh, Mrs. Jane Lynch, the, uh, wife of, uh, former Commissioner Dan Lynch, former State Senator Dan Lynch, uh, died. Her funeral was yesterday at St. Robert Bellarmine. And, um, Jane was a very important partner to Dan, and, uh, Dan was a, really a standout as a county commissioner. Of course, he's a former president of the National Association of County Officials. Uh, Dan was, uh, chairman during the era of, uh, implementation of all these, the terrific programs that take care of people that provide the safety net. And, um, Jane was a real partner in that. And so I'd like to take a moment to recognize, uh, her contribution behind the scenes, uh, as all spouses do.
She, she was also a long-term county employee as well.
That's right, she was. She worked for Sam.
Yep.
That's right. Thank you, I forgot about that. So if we could have a moment of silence and, uh, recognition of Jane's contribution, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. And she was also the mother-in-law of John Lemain.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you all very much.
Okay, we'll go into executive session for labor negotiations?
What's that?